Alrighty, ladies and gentlemen. We're going to start our study session. Alright, department folks. Alrighty, I have, uh-oh. I have item number eight, and I'm going to call that ready. Counselor Thompson.
Thank you, Madam President. I have items nine and 10. Can I hear from law on item nine?
Item nine is going to be withdrawn. The section that has asked to be amended, they don't need to amend that particular section. If they do need to come back, we'll get a different section. But right now, our opinion is that they don't need to make any amendment to do what they want to do. So, if that section isn't...
Okay, so number nine will be withdrawn, and number 10 is all set.
Thank you, Counselor Rudd.
I have items 11 through 13. Item 11, there's going to be a committee meeting at 2:00 PM today. The local law has to be introduced and tabled for 12. I think we should still introduce, like, Dave, is Dave here?
Yeah, you can speak to him.
Yeah, yeah, so we're gonna, so we'll introduce it and table it, but Dave, still come up if you're, there we go, right on cue. Dave Clifford, you want to come up and just introduce the floodplain one?
Straight in. Flying.
Good afternoon, counselors. Started right on time, I see.
As we should.
What, uh, what are we, which number are we on right now?
Twelve.
All right, number twelve, the flood...
Okay, yeah, this is an exemption for properties located within the flood zone here in Syracuse, where the owners are required to purchase federal flood insurance.
So, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
So, we know we have two different flood zones. We have the flood zone going up Meadowbrook, right?
We have more than two.
Okay, so does it apply to all of the flood zones?
Yes. Anybody who's located in a flood zone, but they have to meet other requirements. First of all, they have to have flood insurance, pay for it, and prove that. If they're located within a special district that NBD has the strategic district, they don't have to show us their income. But if they're located outside of that district, they have to meet the income limit, which I believe is like $65,000, household income. So, and they also have to obviously purchase flood insurance and show us that they have that.
Counselor, this is a response to your asking the Assembly to create...
Right, I know what it's a response to, but I wanted to know where was the flood zone and how was the criteria?
The areas, Meadowbrook is one, but mostly along Onondahoga Creek. There's some along Harbor Brook in Skunk City.
Right.
And actually, the flood zone extends up near the inner harbor. I doubt anybody there is going to qualify, but it's possible.
For what it's worth, I actually asked Dave for a map that showed it, and then a corresponding map that shows the NSRA, or the, I don't know if it's NRSI, or then the neighborhood revitalization and strategic zones. Because you're only eligible if you're within that. So, there would be some parts that fall not in one of those zones, but are still in a flood zone.
But they have to meet the income limit, okay.
My question is, are people automatically enrolled, or how does...
They have to apply every year.
So, how do we, are we planning outreach, or how would people be aware of this?
I've sent a letter to all the possible properties that would qualify, all one, two, and three family residents within that area. They don't have to be owner occupied if they're in that strategic area.
So, the other information that I thought was valuable...
Along with the letter, I also sent them a copy of the exemption application.
And Counselor Green, they're actually doing an event over at the Southwest Community Center, where they're going to do the presentation and explain the application, and they're also going to help people fill out the application to make sure that they get in, because it has to be in by March 1st.
So, when is the event, Counselor?
I can get the date, I think it's, um, I think one is next week.
You can get it to us.
Yep. Thank you, Rich.
Commissioner, just one of the information, and I'm asking for a reason. When was the last time this area over there flooded?
I can't answer that, I don't know.
I remember, the clerk probably remembers the last time it flooded, right?
Long time ago.
A long time ago, and that wasn't because of the creek, it was a water main break?
Well, these, these properties are located in what used to be called the 100-year floodplain. In other words, on average, they expect it to flood every 100 years. This is...
Right, it's never happened, though.
Or, this is FEMA's...
Yeah, I know, I know, I know it's FEMA.
Yeah.
I'm just asking for the record that it's never flooded, and the flood that did happen was a water main break, not because of the creek. Yeah, I've always expressed a problem with forcing people to buy insurance. It just seems a little sketchy to me. I made the same complaint to Maxine Waters' office. She wrote the legislation, and we're being impacted way over here on the other side of the country for what I still think wasn't a clear enough explanation for why we need to do it, and specifically in poor neighborhoods. This is not your fault, obviously.
No, but it actually relates to financing.
Yeah, I understand.
So, banks, banks who are putting a mortgage on the properties that are located in these flood zones are requiring it as part of...
And FEMA's replenishing their funds from the hurricanes.
And that's, that's how they're being forced, as you say.
Yeah.
If you don't have a mortgage, you don't need to get it.
Yeah, it has less to do with the safety of the people and has more to do with something else. That's just the point I'm making, certainly not at your expense, Commissioner, but I just wanted to state that.
I have a question. When we initially had to accept the flood maps, and we were told that that, you know, we didn't want to accept the flood maps, but we were told at that time that when we, when we really had to accept the flood maps, the reason was because if we didn't pass them or accept them by a certain date, then the people living in that area wouldn't be eligible for certain federal flood insurance programming that was going to be less expensive than a local option, for instance. And I'm wondering if these exemptions are really interesting to me, that we're able to create these exemptions? And I'm glad that we're able to create these exemptions, but that's, I'm wondering how this impacts that, that fact that we had to approve the maps with certain areas on them, but now we're able to exempt certain areas from that?
Well...
That's not going to affect the ability to apply for this federal...
Counselor, you have the authority to put a tax exemption in with the state of New York's permission. You asked them to tax exempt these properties in order to help them pay for the flood insurance. That's all you could locally do. You can't deal with the FEMA maps or anything.
Right, I know that. And my question is actually relative to the insurance that people are able to get from the state as a result of the tax maps being approved in a certain amount of time. So, this isn't going to affect anybody's ability to apply for the...
I don't believe so.
Federal insurance.
The problem is, we're dealing with a lot of different layers here.
Yeah.
It's the federal government that institutes these zones. It's the state government that allows the exemption, and it's the city government that approves it for the city of Syracuse, so, kind of a mixed bag.
But we were told we had to approve the maps by a certain time, or the people in the flood zones wouldn't be allowed to apply for federal, federally sponsored or provided flood insurance, which is less expensive.
Just less expensive, yes.
And I just thought with these exemptions, that's not going to affect anyone else's ability to apply for...
Not to my knowledge, no.
Okay.
Mary?
I just wanted to clarify that if we, the rule was if we didn't apply, if we didn't adopt the maps by a certain date, then the city was also not eligible for any FEMA money. For example, I believe it was April 2011 when we had that huge storm, and we got a lot of FEMA funding to reimburse our overtime and emergency costs. So, we would have, we would be exempt from, from any funding as well.
That was their money grab.
I'm glad to see we had an opportunity to carve out some areas of relief for some people, though, you know.
So, I would, I would just say what we're really doing is, there's 900 parcels that would be eligible. Mr. Clifford said there's like 200, 260 there.
Around 229 parcels, as far as I know, have federal flood insurance in the city of Syracuse.
And this is us basically letting them have forgiveness on their city, the city portion of their taxes, in order to compensate and offset for the cost of the flood insurance. So, it's for people who live in the targeted zones, who meet the income requirements, we're basically saying, we will, if you do sign up for the insurance, we will cover that cost with the city taxes. So, we'll get less money, in theory, but we're doing it to make up for the loss that that individual, those people suffered.
That's, and this is at, Counselor, this is at the request of the council. We asked the state to do this. We thought that we, when FEMA came here, we said, what can we do to alleviate some of the burden that our people are going to have in those areas? And this is the answer that we came to, and...
So, these people are still going to have the flood insurance? They're just not going to pay for it?
This is, this is going to, no, they will pay.
They're going to pay for it, and we're going to give them a credit essentially on their taxes.
This will help offset the costs, so...
We're paying for it.
Money grab.
Well, even that, you can see that there's 900 eligible and 229 who have actually gotten the insurance, so clearly...
So, thank you, federal government.
Of course.
Thank you.
Do you want to say anything about 13? Any questions on 13, a couple corrections?
These are just raw corrections that came to our attention.
I think we're good to go.
Thank you. Counselor Green?
Thank you, Madam President. I have items 14 and 15.
Good afternoon, counselors. Mary Robinson, City Engineer. This is accepting the lining of two sewer manholes in the 1500 block of South Salina Street from the Syracuse Mottled Neighborhoods, who's doing the community cafe project. And it's, this is as a result of the county's one-on-one sanitary sewer offset law, to meet the requirement of the additional sanitary flow that will be going to the system from the project.
What's the cost?
The cost, who, did the city pay anything for this, or is this all going to be developed?
No, the only thing we're doing is furnishing Syracuse Mottled Neighborhoods the two frames and grates that they're going to replace for us.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 15. Commissioner Robinson, is this you? Item 15. So, I think if you could just try to put into context like what the process is now, and what the process that we're proposing would be.
Well, I believe the process is, right now, we didn't have a, basically a form to fill out for film, so we wanted to make sure that we had something in writing, sort of like a liability waiver. There's no change in fee form, it's just, just something that we can have to protect us from any liable, liability.
I might want to have somebody from the city answer this, that, Commissioner, you might be able to, we have a permit section, license and permit section. Most of the permits you would sign off on, but they would end up going there for processing. Why is this one ending up with your signing off? That's the question, one of the questions. Versus, versus the...
Most of the, Nora Spillane, Deputy Commissioner, Neighborhood and Business Development, most of the permits get Jeremy's sign off because they are in the right-of-way permits.
Yes.
This will be going through the normal routing process. All they do, people will come into the central permit office, fill it out, they'll route it around, and then Jeremy, John Hancock's it at the end.
Okay, but the difference is that this one says that he is, or the Department of Public Works Commissioner is issuing the permit?
Most of the right-of-way permits are worded that way.
And if it weren't a right-of-way permit, and it still is a film permit?
Yes.
Or only permit?
Yeah, this is, we can only regulate them on our property, which is the right-of-way. So, that's what this, this permit is for.
Okay, and this still has the same process where the police department, fire department, everybody else signs off?
All relevant departments will have a sign off.
Okay.
And a quick question, because I know they do filming in certain areas, and let me ask you this, because I saw what the cost was going to be. Because for me, I think that some of the areas, we're going to need more police coverage to move them along, because they just take over everything. Is there a cost for the overtime for the police? Is there a cost to compensate the police? Because it has, we have to have the coverage.
I think the cost of the permit is designed to cover most costs that the city incurs. We can certainly look at other ways that we can be compensated for that, absolutely.
So, I mean, I think, you know, encouraging filming in the city is a good goal, and I think is, you know, the more we can get it, the better. When I look at this form, you know, it's 10 pages, it's pretty long, like, is this best practice that other cities are doing? Is it the right length? Is it all the right questions? I'm not an expert in that, but I'm just asking.
It's built off of what our existing right-of-way permitting process is. Now, again, should we be looking to streamline all permits? Probably, and we are, definitely, but this covers all the bases we need this to cover in one place. So, it is long, but it also is comprehensive.
Because then the other thing would be, you know, if you've got people that are frequent users, right, that, you know, is, should we be having a different process for them, just to make sure they're complying, and they're filling it out every time, and have it not be 10 pages?
Yeah, absolutely. I think this is a first step to make sure that we are monitoring who's using in the right-of-way, that we have some enforcement mechanisms, that we do get compensated for the use of the right-of-way, but it's certainly not the last step either. This is a, you know, we haven't had anything, so I think we are looking to refine our process as we go.
And I think it's a great idea, but I'm going to ask Counselor Green, I mean, I'm not saying hold it up, but I'm going to ask Counselor Green to call a committee meeting, because there, I have, still have some concerns.
Sure.
Because, again, I know the congestion that some of this causes.
Yeah, absolutely.
I've jumped on the phone a million times and called Deputy Mayor, the mayor, and it's like, you need to get police over here to move this traffic.
Yeah.
So, our police are moving traffic, so...
Yeah, we can, we'd be happy to do that.
I think that's a great idea, and I, the other thing I would say, too, is, I don't know if we've talked to anyone in the film industry in conjunction with this, but that might be another useful perspective to bring to the committee.
Yeah, we have chatted with some local filmmakers, and there was some discussion around what makes sense, what can we do? You know, they, obviously, nobody likes to have to get a permit, but they also, I think, appreciate that it gives them some certainty about where they can and cannot go.
Sure, okay, that's great. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Carney?
Thank you, Madam President. I have items 16, 17, 18, 19.
Good afternoon, Julie LaFave, Commissioner Parks and Recreation. Item number 16 is to amend an ordinance in order to reallocate funds for a McKinley Playground project. 135 of it would be reimbursed via a grant.
That's good.
Okay. Item number 17 and 18 are to amend an ordinance so that we can purchase a specialty trailer, so that we can haul equipment that currently we are not able to do on our own, and we have to request assistance to move.
What is, sorry, what is the equipment?
It's currently, right now, for larger pieces of equipment, we cannot move them. We have to call DPW, and we have to wait for whatever their timeline is, based on their projects. So, this would give us the ability to streamline that and move equipment faster and on our own.
What would be like an example, just so I can...
Like skid steers, bobcats, just the larger pieces of equipment, because right now, I think we can only move mowers and such. And item number 19 is to enter into an agreement with RecDesk, which is a recreational software, which will get us eventually to the point where we can access, where the public can have 24/7 access to all of our programming and the ability to register permits, check our calendars for availability for anything.
I'm going to ask the kind of, sort of, question. Deputy Mayor, maybe you are one of you can answer. How many computer programs do we have?
I can't answer that at all. I only know Parks and Recreation. This one, just to defend, just to defend this one, Parks and Recreation is its own world. We don't do anything that anybody else in the city does. I mean, we're highly specialized with youth leagues and whatnot, so...
I appreciate all of that, and most departments are highly specialized, but we have MASTS, and we have BASS, and we have People's Lofts, and we have all kind of programs, and it's like, can't some of these streamline into each other?
I'm sorry.
No, no.
Sharon Owens, Deputy Mayor. Counselor, you're absolutely right. You are in the heads of discussions we're having about other topics we've talked about, about streamlining, whether it be finance, whether it be other departments. IT is another department, we're talking about that. There are some specialized software, and I'm preaching to the choir, and industries evolve because they know that we need these ways to mechanize things. It makes it better for management, as well as consumer use. But your point is well-taken, and that is another area of streamlining we're in the midst of conversations right now.
Right, thank you.
This also would replace one of our software, so we would be able to get rid of one. Any other questions?
Counselor Boyle?
Thank you, Madam President. I have items 20, 21, and 22. Item 20 is about our alcohol and drug testing.
Hi.
Hi.
Donna Prisco, Assistant Director of Personnel. And we put this forward, this is required under the Department of Transportation regulations.
Is this a new company?
It's, so, it used to be Industrial Medical, that we originally contracted with, and Five Star purchased them, so... It's not new, it's just it was acquired.
Okay, there's been no other changes as far as...
No other changes. This is our last extension.
Okay. Item 21, is that also you?
That is not me.
Oh, okay. Local, oh, that's Janet Burke. Hi, Janet.
Hi, Janet Burke, the Director of Research. This is a grant that we're doing on behalf of the City Clerk's Office to digitize marriage licenses. Their books are that big, and it's really tough to lift them, and we want to preserve them. So, we're about 84,000 records and 302 microfilms.
All right. Sounds like a good idea. Thanks, Janet. And item number 22, I will be passing a resolution honoring Corcoran High School Girls' Basketball Coach Jim Marsh, who has been the basketball coach for Corcoran since forever, and he just had his 500th career win, so if anybody would like to sign on to that resolution with me, and we'll unanimously pass that, hopefully.
Even though I'm a bulldog.
We've got bulldogs, we've got everybody here represented in the Syracuse City School District. We have our youth ed, so just take a minute. Our Youth Advisory Council's here in the meeting today, so I want to thank them for coming. We got bulldogs in the house, anybody? We got bulldogs. We got cougars in the house, yeah. We've got to end this one here.
Black knights.
Black knights.
No.
No black knights? I know we got some falcons, we got ITC, so, thanks for coming. All right, my items are all right.
Working is all that matters, let's go.
No bulldog.
Cougars.
Counselor Allen, weren't you a bulldog?
No, I was a cougar. Cougar for life.
Well, I was a galik knight, so...
I'm a bulldog.
All right, thank you. I have items 23 through 48.
Good afternoon, counselors. Heather Lamandola, zoning administrator. Item 23, 727 South Cross Avenue was an additional restaurant in an existing building that was recently built on, on the hill. And you had held this last time.
Is this the one in the, what was the name of this one? Do you remember?
The name of the building?
Business.
The business?
Restaurant.
Halals? Okay, I remember it. Okay, thank you.
Item 24, this is a special permit for indoor recycling center, bottle and can return on East Genesee Street. It's in an existing plaza where the Dollar General store is now, out towards Nottingham.
Whoa.
That's in, I think that's in my district.
That is in my district, yeah. Do we know what it was before?
It's a vacant storefront now, it's...
A pizza shop.
Yeah, pudgies and all that, yeah.
Because I used to go there and get pizza when I was not...
Grabbing my slices in high school, but...
Okay, we're all set.
Okay. And the item 25 and 26, this is a, an abandonment of a very small, irregular piece of land that the petitioner would like to acquire from the city. It's a piece of right-of-way.
Does it run into that Harbor Brook? Is that the...
This actually will straighten out the street that was realigned years ago. Okay, thank you.
Just so you know, because we have to hold a public hearing, we have to hold the abandonment until after the hearing is held.
Yep, so 25 will be ready, and then 26 will hold. Okay, item 27. Sorry, pinch hitting. Item 27 is an encroachment at the development project at 321, 323 South Salina. Some people might know it as the Whitney Lofts Project, and it's just an awning. You said Whitney? Whitney Lofts. Okay. They're doing a mixed-use renovation of those two buildings. Okay, thank you. And item 28 is a fence. Pretty straightforward.
I believe the fence is already in it, it's after the fact. The owner replaced the fence and put it exactly where the old fence was, but it turned out...
The fence has been up since then.
Been up for a couple of years now.
Making fences legal again.
Is it your house? Yeah, it's my house. No, it's kitty corn. It's a nice fence, you know, I don't want to make the guy tear it down.
It's a good thing you didn't build a wall.
All right, thank you, Nora.
Hey, Nora, sorry, one quick question regarding 321, when you said they're doing mixed use, what is, do you know particulars about the project?
Yeah, they're doing residential units on the second through fourth floors, and the first floor and the basement are going to be a restaurant, and the basement's going to be a speakeasy bar kind of thing.
Oh, cool.
All right, and now items 29 through 48.
46 and 47 are new, everything else is held.
46 and 47 are new, but everything else is held.
And I think we have a, I think we have a mistake on 46. That's District Four.
No, it's District 45. It's a new one that we're just making.
We need a lot more counselors to get this one done. District Four, yeah.
Good afternoon, counselors. Callie Kaku with Neighborhood and Business Development. The list coming around includes items that have been previously held, in addition to two new items on the back. Items 46 and 47, one being a parking lot that is city-owned for future development, and one being a vacant residential structure. I have a couple other requests. Item 29 has been redeemed, so I'd like to withdraw that one. And an update on item number 42 has been found to be vacant and is being monitored by code enforcement.
Number 42 is vacant, you said?
Yes.
Okay.
Excuse me, item number 33, it says non-applicable for total taxes owed.
I'm not sure why that didn't pull, but I'll find it.
Do you think it's applicable or not?
It just means that the, the formula didn't pull, the data didn't work for some reason, but I'll sort it out.
Which one were you referring to?
33, I'll get an update to you.
33, okay. All right, any updates or questions from the district counselors in regards to the properties within your respective districts? No? Well, good thing we held out for number 29 at least, because you guys were able to get payment on that.
Yep.
Okay.
So, I am holding all the items in District Four.
So, what are we doing with these?
Your third, okay.
We're holding?
And, how much?
I'll let you know.
Okay. And who else? You're holding yours? Okay. All right, so the rest of them will hold, will hold. Item 42 is going to be ready, since it's vacant.
Okay.
What about 46, this is a lot?
And so, 46 is, that's a new one, and that's a vacant lot, so that one is ready.
Counselor Allen, do we know where we stand with the land bank, getting back to us on these?
Well, I was supposed to have a meeting with her last week, and their software was down, so that meeting didn't happen, and I haven't received the report yet.
Okay.
That's the update, yes.
I'm sorry, Liz.
Yeah, yeah. So, I'm going to continue to hold all of the items that are within the fourth district,[1735.12]